We have our agenda.
The only one I missed, I missed the call about, sorry.
Andrew.
Andrew, I did speak with him a couple of weeks ago. I know somebody else is coming to talk about a piece on twenty eight.
Is he?
They wanna open up a.
Do you know that he's coming?
Yeah, he told me he's coming. A retail operation to sell sheds.
Okay.
Andrew though is here, so if we want to.
All right, Andrew.
Yeah, thank you.
You get the long straw.
All right, appreciate your time. So, um, we purchased a cabin in ninety one Pantherkill Road in twenty thirteen. Uh, the long-term plan was eventual retirement there, but we realized after a couple of years that it's not really ideal for long-term rental. Um, sorry, for long-term living because it's like tiny kitchen, tiny bathroom, tiny bedrooms. And it needs a ton of work to renovate you, plus it's got like thirty year old space heaters and it's not winterized. So, we wanted to do the upgrades, but we thought about building another cabin on the property, like a guest cabin and two bedroom. Um, we got the permit for that in twenty seventeen. We started a septic, cleared the land, and roughed in the driveway, but then COVID hit, so that stalled. And we thought about starting to work up again, but we, we figured, hey, maybe we can subdivide. Sell the old cabin which you can't really live in and then build a new one with a, a real kitchen and use that as our primary.
How big's the piece of property?
So, it's currently substandard, it's four point three and I think it's five acre minimum there.
Yep.
So, yeah, no, I know. The thing is, is that there's so many properties that are tiny, like on our same side and five acres.
We can't create a substandard lot.
Yeah.
We're like, we're just not allowed.
Is this in, is this in Grand View Acres?
Woodland Valley.
Pantherkill.
Where, where?
We can't make it.
Pantherkill.
We just can't make it any smaller.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can't split it or anything like that.
Okay, so even though we already have a permit and we can build the house there, it just wouldn't be able to split that way?
Right, right.
Okay. Uh, is there a scenario where you allow a kitchen in the secondary room?
Um, special permit for accessory apartment.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and now we'd have to be a variance or we go back?
It's, that's us. Um, it's a site, it's a site plan. Um, Grace would set you up with the paperwork you need to apply for that.
Okay.
What you'd have to do is, um, uh, it's a ser-, you need, you need somebody, a survey or someone to map out the property and, you know, locate all the things, the septic, the new house location.
Okay.
So, we can see setbacks, stuff like that. Um, and there's a whole checklist, uh, what you, showed to you when you.
So, I talked to Mr. Brewer in town, I guess he'd probably do the survey and do the layouts and all that, right?
Yep.
Okay, so septic's in, that's one step down, I don't have to worry about that. And then, um, permit is done as well.
The new septic is in?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, Rex did, uh, we did that in like twenty sixteen or seventeen, I think.
That's right. And it's installed, it's done.
Yeah, 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 it's installed, it's done, yeah. So, that was a huge step, I think. Um, all right, cool, so I guess that answers my question.
Yeah, we're just, we're not, we're just not allowed to. It's not in our power to even entertain.
Okay, is there, is there any other board that would consider that, if we try to get some kind of variance for it or?
What, to split it?
Yeah.
No, can't be done anywhere.
Can't be done anywhere.
Yeah. I know it's weird because a lot of the lots are substandard, but once, there was, at one point, there was no zoning in the town, but once it came into effect it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so like if you have, you currently have a substandard lot, that's allowed to continue to exist and allowed to be passed on as it is, but we're not allowed to make it less conforming.
Okay. And it was just weird because I literally read across the street it's one, one point six.
It's all over the town.
It's just everywhere like that, it's crazy. Okay, cool, I appreciate you.
Yeah, we don't make the rules.
I get it.
But you have a, you have a means here, you could, um, yeah, you could move forward with that.
Okay, thanks so much everyone.
Sure.
Give up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Grace.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're done.
Now, we're essentially talking about a.
Pantherkill.
Pantherkill Road, yeah.
Woodland Valley.
In Woodland Valley.
He got a permit from Howie to build a gas cottage. I don't think he's ever been before this board.
Yeah, it would just have to do with accessory apartment.
Yeah.
I mean, I made, I would've made him come for a permit for a gas cottage.
Yeah.
He should, he should.
Well, then he can get his kitchen and, you know.
Yeah.
Do it how he wants to do it.
Have you heard anything about the Phoenisha Soap Company?
Nope.
Nothing?
They're open.
They're open.
The sign on the front.
He's got, I mean, they've got a temporary CEO for downstairs in that space, so they can open their.
Where is that, church?
That's in, uh, Wendezky's.
Crossing the Emerson.
Crossing the Emerson.
So, they voted for the size.
They got their, they got their sign approval?
Yes, they did.
Yeah, at the zoning board meeting, they voted on the size. And then they came up with a compromise that was all that they were asking for, but.
No, they got the size they were asking for, a foot lower.
Oh, okay.
But as he wanted it thirteen feet above grade, the board said he couldn't go twelve feet over grade. This was the concession.
Were there any negative, negative, uh, comments about, uh, Wildness or Rex?
No.
No?
That, that went through that week later.
So, up to the eighteenth, nothing, nothing came in negative? Good, good.
So, um, well, I'll bring up something.
Okay.
The rail, the rail explorers.
Yeah.
Um, you guys, I don't know if you guys all saw the email, they're, um.
I did.
They're, they're, they're just going back to, um, it says, "We will resume evening rides." I don't know if that means going back to where they were or going, or they're gonna try and throw that ten o'clock one on there, whatever it was anyway.
I think they're, they're willing to, they're just.
And I don't know if lights are just gonna appear or.
That's what it is.
I think they're gonna do what they've been doing the last few years, which is rather than not do it Friday and Saturday nights, they're gonna do a four mile ride Friday and Saturday nights.
I mean, they were even open on Monday already. Monday, when I went to work, they were out there.
Oh, they're open, open.
They're open, I thought it was supposed to be after Memorial Day, they'd be open seven days a week.
That was the first year, I think. Then the second year, they, they just expanded everything.
Yeah.
Was there else that you wanted to say?
Um, well, I guess the question is, um, is there anything else that, you know, we feel should be done? You know, with the neighbor complaints or, because they had talked about doing things along Andrews Lane and that seems to have evaporated.
Well, I say that the people along Andrews Lane and Mount Pleasant Road there, they, they, such a declaration to them when they were here.
Yeah.
That they really, um, they harmed themselves with them because they're just gonna keep doing what they always do and it's gonna be the same for them, it's not gonna change.
Yeah.
You know, making all those demands and wanting, you know, we don't want this and we don't want that, and we want a wall and we want, uh, just put them off and said, hey, we'll just operate the way we've been going.
Well, they were talking about tall grasses as an area, and that sounds doable, doesn't it?
They were talking about a whole bunch of, they were talking about like that, um, kinda green tunnel thing.
Right.
Which I get is a, it's a very large.
They were gonna make it almost like an arb or.
Yeah.
Kind of thing.
That would be nice.
And he did toyed out that the Emerson is lit up like Luna Park.
That's right.
I don't know if you know what Luna Park is, but I, I've seen it. And it is, so they're, they have a legitimate, uh.
I've been thinking about it. If I could just have the board's attention just for a few minutes, because I really have been thinking about this. Um, I wanna make sure this is heard. When I saw the email that they were not gonna submit site plan approval, I said, "I don't blame them." Uh, and I think that this board, and myself included, we got trapped into becoming a weapon. I think we became weaponized. I believe that a board like ours is meant to be a shield. We protect the community against bad development as defined in the book and as envisioned in the comprehensive general plan. Vocal community, opposition, that's fine. This is a purely political issue in the sense that it's a question of, we have a valuable resource that runs through Shandaken, that rail. It's incredibly valuable. And to me, it was wrong to come to this board to do the work of the town of Shandaken and the county of Ulster. They need to figure out, hundred and thirty thousand people in Ulster benefit from having rail explorers. Two dozen people are inconvenienced. I don't discount their inconvenience. I would not want it in my backyard.
Where'd you get the hundred and thirty thousand number from?
Wikipedia. I looked up the Ulster County and it said, "We have a hundred and thirty thousand people."
About that's our population in Ulster County?
That's what it said, yeah, in Wikipedia. That's my best resource.
But I know that.
But in any event, it's a lot more people than the folks who are inconvenienced. That doesn't mean that a hundred and thirty thousand should tell twenty-four people what to do. I'm not saying that at all. But what I am saying is this, and I fault myself, we read that book very carefully, we parsed it. And we hung our decision that they needed to submit for site plan approval, I'm putting the lights aside, on the word use, that there was a use, three-letter word. The thing that I didn't do, that I faulted myself, was to ask, "Where is the precedent?" Because how would any of us feel if a planning board said, "Oh, you wanna put down pea gravel, Adirondack chairs and a fire pit, you have to submit for site plan approval." We would go ballistic if anybody told that to us, but that is effectively what we said to rail explorers. And I, and I faulted myself for not saying, "Hey, where's the precedent?" I think we became weaponized and I just wanna say, we need to be sensitive to that in the future. The community needs to be heard, but we shouldn't be doing the job that belongs to the town and the county.
Okay, I, I don't understand it. I don't understand the word you just said.
Okay.
The ordinance says, it's the law that we have to do it.
Right.
So, what are you saying?
What I'm saying is that on my time on this board and my time on the county planning board, I have never seen any action that a site plan approval was required to put down pea gravel, Adirondack chairs and a fire pit.
Yeah, but you're talking about in a private, in a private area. This is a public area.
I'm just saying, there were private zoning, commercial zoning issues, I've never seen a site plan approval required for that.
Plans on our site plan checklist. We have a landscaping plan, we have, which, which Emerson had to submit one when they.
Yes.
When they applied. And they're, I mean, it's a, it's a big expansion from where they were. We talked, we gave them site plan approval to put buildings on Lower High Street.
Yeah.
And that was it. I mean, they're adding stuff further down the road. We, it's a weird situation because normally, all of their hours of operation and all of those things would have been stipulated in their site plan. And because it's county-owned, we said, "Well, we're approving the buildings." And then they expand one from what they told us, which was four P M., they expanded from there.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what the neighbors are having a problem with. So, the, you're asking for a precedent and there's not, there's not an exact comparison to this. There's only one railroad in Shandaken, so we can't, we can't look for an exact comparative. But they've expanded greatly. If somebody were to suddenly start doing business, you know, way over here, I mean, did they rent, did they rent the Mount Tremper train station? Is that part of, is that part of?
It's part of the county's leasehold, fifty feet either side of the center of the rails.
There's another issue though with their original plan, and they had scaled it down to just pea gravel and Adirondack chairs, but originally, they wanted to put a deck in the back of the depot.
See, you're absolutely right, Debbie.
And they wanted to overhang it over the street bank, which is, you know, absolutely out of the question.
And you said setting the lights aside, which we can't do.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you what's got my goat in this whole thing. They said they're gonna do it anyway. That, here's what's happening, okay? And it started with past enforcement officers, okay, that weren't doing the job. The bottom line is, is that an applicant comes to us, tells us what we wanna do, we look up the law, we interpret what the law says.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Use happens to be a pretty big min, meaning in planning and zoning.
Yes.
Okay? Then they turn around and they say they're not gonna do it. You say, "Okay, you're not gonna do it, that's fine." You turn here and you say, "Okay, we're giving you a stop worker order and it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day for every day that you do it." And it's in here and it says it, and it's our law. You can't just decide to circumnavigate the law. You can't just have an applicant say, "I'm not gonna do it, I'm gonna do what I wanna do." Our job is to interpret this law, period.
I really felt that, that email.
And it, and it doesn't matter, and it doesn't matter whether there's one person that's concerned as a neighbor and there's millions of dollars being made in the town, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I mean, Kenny Wodenski put a sign wherever he wants and make it as big as he wants, like where do we?
You know, it, you know.
Well, we did have input into the deck, I mean.
Oh, yeah, Rob Scam, he said, "That's not gonna happen because that bank is just collapsing."
Right, right, which we could've told them also as the planning board.
Right.
Um, but at least they showed us the plan before they went ahead and built it. So, I think that we had some valuable input.
And I don't think, and they said they backed off of the deck thing, and I don't think anybody cared about the pea gravel.
No.
I mean, that.
I think what they want.
Anyone complained about the pea gravel, even, even the chairs, it was the lights.
I'll tell you, what they wanna do there, I think is a great idea, myself personally.
The chairs, isn't it?
Yes, and the lights.
No one, I mean, we didn't spend the meeting talking about the chairs, we're in the meeting talking about the lights.
I don't see how that was gonna impact anyone.
Yeah, I don't think.
The chairs or the gravel or the, or the, uh, fire pit.
I mean, I appreciate it, which I said to them, their, you know, their idea of shortening, but then, I mean.
And I liked it because they were going to stop crossing twenty eight in the dark.
I mean, we have all the other businesses, we have, we have noise stuff, we have, um, I mean, bars and restaurants are only allowed to be open until certain hours in New York, like, there is no state code for rail cars, I mean, you know?
It's a good point about the noise, like, you were saying you're very sensitive to noise analysis, but that would've been a significant noise after mid, you know, after.
Right, yeah, they didn't like the Fox fire thing.
Right.
What would've been? I'm not following.
The rail explorers night run, uh, down along twenty eight.
But it avoids the area that a people are being hurt by the noise. There's, there's not a whole lot, there's residential along that two mile run.
There is still residential there though.
There is.
And that's exactly what this board is meant to address.
That's right. You can't change this.
I mean, he even had someone who doesn't live there, who goes and camps at the, uh.
Sleepy Hollow.
And she was complaining about that, that, that.
Right.
I'm like, you know.
What about the eighteen wheels? What about the eighteen wheels that are barreling through? Twenty-eight is a major road in New York State.
It's a state.
No, I think cutting it back was an excellent, I mean, that was an excellent solution and compromise on their part.
But it didn't go anywhere.
Well, they didn't wanna just cut it back, there was a whole bunch of other stuff attached to that.
Well, they wanted to make, for what they're charging people, as you know, because you went out there, they want to give their people something for their money on that night ride. That's what they wanna do.
No, that's not what they wanted to, what they wanted to do is make money. They're not giving nothing away.
Right, but they're pulling it back, so they obviously don't need it. They don't need that ten thirty.
Well, they're just trying, I'm sure they're trying to just find a way to continue, you know, making the same money with a lesser ride.
Right.
But are they committed to not doing a ten thirty run all the way? I'm not convinced of that.
Yeah, I don't know.
We don't have the ability to alter the law for one person. And what you just said, Sam, I disagree with because if you have one neighbor that's against it and you have a whole corporation that makes a million dollars, right, that one neighbor has the right to be the enforcement of this law.
I agree.
So, it doesn't matter, you can't, you can't say, "Well, this many people like it and this many people don't." If that's the case, have them file for an article seventy-eight and it, and apply to change the law.
Right.
That's the next step.
Yeah, my point was, mentioning population was, I don't think this is a planning issue, I think it's a political issue, the town and the county should sort it out. And I think we did a very, very narrow interpretation of the law. That's all I'm saying. And I think we did it because the vocal minority kinda turned us into a weapon.
Well, like you said, about the people. Go ahead.
I, I did think it came up because they, we, they came in and they presented this, they gave us a very nice presentation of what they were gonna do and we care about the neighbors and we're not gonna disturb anybody, we'll run from this hour. And it specifically, I mean, I've got brochures home and notes home that say they were gonna stop at four o'clock. And they don't, and they don't. And they, and they went a little later and, okay, and then.
Later, later.
Yeah, later, later. And then does it, does it stop at that? I mean, do they have a two A M. run?
Yeah.
People would go on that.
There are people who would, not me.
I know people would go on that.
But like you were saying, we're here to interpret the law and protect the people who live in Shandaken.
Yes, I mean, we're all business on this here.
That our job here is also to help people realize their dreams and what they want to do.
That's right.
We're not just here for the people of Shandaken, we're here for the rail explorers and try to help them realize, in any way we can to.
Completely agree. The, the, the economic backbone of Shandaken is tourism for one hundred and fifty years. This was the first active recreation use for tourism that's been brought to this town in a very long time. There's no more tubing. What other active recreation? We'll go to Green County, take a zip line. What they did was brilliant, and I think they took a big risk getting it there and they should be applauded for having a successful business that's completely in line with what this community is about. Tourism, hundred and fifty years of history.
I don't think anyone's questioning that.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's questioning that either.
No.
I think what got people upset is this change that wasn't really finalizing exactly what they were gonna do. And people got worried that once they did one change, that they would just sort of snowball into a big deal and then we wouldn't have any, any.
I mean, we were asking them to submit a plan that showed us where the lights were gonna go. That's what we, that's not unreasonable.
No, agreed, agreed with that. I completely agree. The lights are a different thing.
I asked them how far into the woods they were gonna put the lights, you know?
I mean, nobody was.
Then people were worried about the, uh, the animals and the, you know, this could turn into the Bel Air Resort project. You know, the animals, the flowers, the, you know, and.
You know?
I mean, every, every business owner has limits on their business, you can't just do whatever you want.
Well, well, we're making our mistake and we're all at fault, there's no one sitting here that's not at fault for this, is that when we go through the review process, we can't have them leave ends open that they can constantly change.
Yeah.
And everything that we do is the same way. It's not only that, it's, it's the apart, it's the, the building down there that was supposed to be offices, now it's all, now it's apartments.
Yeah, upstairs.
Okay?
Stairs, yeah.
You know, these are all changes.
Those are supposed to be conference rooms.
They were supposed to be conference rooms.
Yeah, that's in the, that's.
When Howie initially issued that permit, it was incredibly big, it was just about six thousand square feet of space, commercial space.
No, he got us, we had floor plans for that.
Yeah, we had.
And what we're doing is we're, we're living through, we're living through the sins of the past.
Right.
Well, let's not call them sins, let's, let's call them lessons.
Lessons, okay.
I mean, yeah.
And there are people, and we discussed this at another, uh, workshop one year, one day, a couple of months ago during the wintertime, about how people are coming up, and this is, this, this is not a bad thing, don't misunderstand me, to capitalize on the area.
Yeah.
They don't care about the area. Do you know last week, the Nord, the motel that we told?
Norristown.
The Norristown motel that I told Howie was gonna be a problem when he was sitting right there, just sold for nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Really?
I think they sold it.
Yeah, they sold it.
Nine, nine hundred and nine.
And they will be coming before this board.
And you know what that was sold for?
And, and.
Three hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
And, and you just said that.
They'll be here soon.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean.
I discouraged them.
So, what's happening here is people are coming up and they don't care about the town of Shandaken at all, at all. They're here to invest their money and move on.
Where, where, it is, it is a tourism. That's, that is, that is our lifeblood, as you said. If we want it to remain for the next hundred and fifty years, to be a viable place for people to come, for tourism to be in the woods, I mean, there's some measure of, you know, of, um, of keeping of that that we have to do, you know, that's, that's what all these town boards exist for, is to preserve, is to preserve this, you know, to preserve the Catskills and this, you know, this desirable area that people wanna come to.
Well, I don't know what the value is.
I think we just have to tighten up our ship a little.
Yeah.
On, on.
I agree. I think in this case here, there may have been a lost opportunity here to do something better for the town by having the shorter runs and working with them.
Yeah, I was happy with the shorter ones, I was happy. You know, that was my, because I stopped in the dark for that trip, that's what started it, that I'm like, what are these people, crazy?
But we didn't stop them.
I don't believe this board did anything that stops them from having those shorter runs.
I think here's, I think here's what Sam is saying. My regret of that meeting is that it got, it got antagonistic.
Isn't it?
At the end.
Yes.
And that's not, I know, I mean, I've been on this board with you guys for a long time, I know that was no one back here's intent to do. It just, and we all left thinking, "We just wanna cycline, we just wanna know where the lights are."
Right.
You know, I think they left with a different feeling that, um, you know, people were out to get them maybe.
That they, they were in a no-win situation.
Yeah.
Well, they hurt the people.
I regret that they felt, you know.
They felt threatened.
Threatened or cornered or whatever, yeah.
They did.
But I don't know how we could've counted that except by being positive, which Sam was, I mean.
Yeah.
Right, you said, you, you said something positive at that same meeting.
You did, yeah.
He did, he said he went on the rail ride and, uh.
He enjoyed it and.
Had a journey, yeah.
I agree with it, and I guess we should've spoken about.
And when they had to turn the cars around, he had to stand around and wait.
Yeah. Because all in all, I thought it was a good idea.
Yeah.
And I thought we had expressed that, but maybe.
I think it got lost in the noise.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did express it. I mean, if you, if you go back, if you were to write this all down, it's all there, but it probably, that's not the feeling.
They're saying, oh, people are gonna be standing, sitting around, they're gonna be drinking, they're gonna be doing all these things. And what, what do you wanna say about that? They sit in front of the canteen and drinking.
Yeah.
You know, that's the big deal. And I don't really think they're drinking, like, you know, bunch of drunken, full-down people. You know, they might be having a little wine or something, I don't know. I don't think some hardcore liquor could.
Well, they gotta pedalax though.
We can't think.
We can't think, yeah, that's right.
Don't think, don't assume anything.
All right.
I think that when we review these projects and we go through the site plan checklist, if that's what's necessary, whatever, we each have, each one of us have to look up in the ordinance what we're basing our decision on.
Mm-hmm.
State that number, the section, the ordinance, and as we go down each one, okay, parking, turn to page twen, one fif, one sixteen, this is how many spots there has to be.
Right, okay. But you also have to remember that when they first came to us, I don't know what year it was, we had very little to say to them because they were under the jurisdiction of the county.
It's a, it's a very weird situation.
It's a, it's a strange situation. All we could comment on what was happening at the rail station in Phoenisha, the old railroad station, what was going on there. But the rest of it, we really had no right to say anything to them.
So, I think part of what you're saying, Ben, is this was our little in on, on, on the whole situation, we might have some say in it.
Right.
And, and maybe that scared them off. But if we wanna really express support for their original short-run plan, I, I imagine we still could.
Yeah.
Um.
And I would like to.
I think that must be appropriate.
I would like to have them come back, have some to come back.
I, I don't wanna do that.
No?
You, you can, I'll, I'll just, I feel good that way. I'm not feel good.
It seems like it would just turn.
I'm not, I'm not deviating from this law.
Yeah.
I'm not doing anything for the law, I'm not making an exception for any application that contradicts the law. I'm not doing it.
Maybe it was the tenor in which it was all said, you know, we, it did get a little tense there that day. And, and maybe if their message was, "You need to do a site plan approval because we like what you're doing and we need to follow the law," which is an entirely different thing than saying, "Everybody in this audience hates you, you're not getting anywhere without a site plan approval." Those are two different messages that say the same thing.
But I didn't say that.
But I didn't say that.
No, we didn't say that.
That's not fair. I don't believe that's the impression.
I'm talking about the atmosphere in the room.
The atmosphere in the room, sure, but I don't believe that this board gave them the impression that.
No.
Yeah.
I don't think that happened at all.
No.
No, I think we were supportive, we're just waiting for more.
Certainly on that end of the room, yes, they could feel that, but I don't think from this board they got that kind of impression, or they shouldn't have.
The last three or four projects that we've been involved in, I watched them change right in front of me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And add things on where I didn't even know what they were talking about anymore. When we talked about Uncle Pete's, it went from two hundred and fifty people to six hundred and fifty people.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah.
Right? This is where we run into these problems.
Yeah.
But they did come back and say that they weren't gonna do weddings. They told us.
Yes, they did. But why don't you?
That's not in, that's not in their site plan though. They said that, but that's not.
That, I was just gonna say.
They have the, they have the approval.
The ability to do.
I think the rail explorers said their last run would be at four, but just because it's not doesn't mean that there's any recourse here from this board. Even though they're having runs after four, it's the same, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they find that weddings are on demand, they're not gonna use this as bookings, so.
Right.
But I think they might wanna do some actual running of the place to see how feasible it is.
When like, and like with their, with the, with my, the rail explorers, with their late-night runs, people kept saying, "Would you consider not doing them?" And their answer was, "If they don't sell, we won't do them." They never said.
Right.
Right, I thought you asked them, how about dropping off that last run?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know.
It wasn't, that wasn't a, um, yeah, that wasn't a charity, that was like, you know, "We're not gonna make money, we're not gonna do it."
Right.
Which is what any business.
Right, well, every business to make money.
Yeah, of course. That's why every business is in business.
Right.[1755.11]
But that's actually expanding.
I'd rather stay in bed.
It's expanding the, the business that they're already doing.
Yes.
And every time that happens, it does have some community impact.
Uh-huh.
Yes.
Yes.
Which we apparently don't have any control over them doing it. And I think that's where the negativity came.
How did, uh, all these people show up that night? I mean, this wasn't a, uh, public hearing. It was a pre- presentation?
Well, it was on the agenda.
It was on the agenda.
Oh, it was?
Yeah, it was in.
I saw they were watching that.
It's on Facebook. The community, you know, I, I've read quotes that they basically believe that rail explorers is gonna do whatever they want because the county has their back. So there's a feeling of helplessness.
Well, that, that.
And I get that.
That's a suspicion.
Yeah.
You know? I mean, you're paying somebody money to review what you wanna do, I mean.
Right.
But, uh, one, uh, one of the neighbors did post on Facebook a comment saying, what, 'cause I, I, I made a comment on a Facebook post about that, saying that they, it seems that they are withdrawing their short-run, light runs proposal. And that, that got some positive feedback from one of the neighbors.
Hmm.
Oh, well, that's good.
You know?
And, and I think, see, they wanted to know when it's gonna be a definite thing, and I don't, you'll have to know that really.
Right.
There are some things that have changed in the town of Shandaken, and people still think it's the way it used to be. There's no shortage for jobs in the town of Shandaken, at all. And I don't wanna hear that, oh, you don't make any money, you don't do this. Everywhere you go, there's a restaurant in town that's a good-sized restaurant. I spoke to the people. They come from Stone Ridge, Reinbeck, Kingston, and Asofas. 'Cause they can't get people to work there, making a hundred-dollar tips a night.
When the, the guy who wants to open a Sweet Sue did a posting on Facebook saying, looking for a cook, twenty-five dollars an hour. Now, the little bit that I know from this business from my wife says, not only her, everybody we talked to, from Twenty-Eight to Woodstock, we said, holy crap. You, you, you can't be in business if you're starting with your line cooks at twenty-five bucks an hour.
That's what they.
But that's what they have to offer.
That, that's what they get.
Yeah.
That's what they get. You should see what carpenters are getting for.
Sixty-five, I heard.
Right? How about being a bus driver? Three thousand-dollar sign-on.
I work four days.
Right, and pick, and pick your days.
Four-day workday. Yep, and a sign-on bonus.
Everywhere I go around here, everywhere I go, somebody asks me if I know somebody that's looking for work.
Yeah.
Let's hope it lasts.
Yeah.
Let's hope it lasts, that's right.
Everybody's.
Everybody's.
We're calling a cycle for nothing.
Yeah. What's happening at the Shandaken then? The D E P holding you up?
D E Ps.
Probably they're the other night, that's why. Yes, I saw nothing was happening.
Nothing. Nothing is happening.
And that's what he told me.
But this is Wednesday night. This is burger night over there, so we're here, you know, come on.
Yep. No, it was last Wednesday.
It was last Wednesday?
I'd much rather be eating a burger right now.
Yeah, nice early night, very, very, uh, Shandaken night. Very good. It was today.
Uh-huh.
With Tom Cooch.
Oh, it's only seven thirty.
We all had bacon, lettuce, and tomato sandwiches and a soda, eighty-five dollars.
I know.
So. Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, um, rail explorer's contract is up in, um, uh, December, and they're gonna renew with the county. Uh, I think negotiations start in September, so if there's anything that we feel as a board should be addressed, uh, in relation to the code,
Oh, I know.
now, like, this is our one window, you know?
All right. All right, I have a question.
Yeah.
And I wasn't here, but Dennis Doyle was here. What was that all about? What did he say?
That was the meeting when they were talking about, um, addressing some of the neighbors' concerns with screening. Um, they had talked about the noise reduction to quiet wheels, which sounds like that's in the process regardless.
Okay.
Um, and, um, they were talking about tightening the track sections and planting grass, and that's when they talked about making like a, like an arboretum, like a green tunnel thing.
Right. But what did Dennis Doyle say about the legality of that run?
He didn't.
He didn't?
No.
He talked about the history of the, of the county, of the county's ability to lease it.
He didn't.
Right. Okay, well.
It was about the county's financial hardship, if I'm being honest, with that property.
Oh, well, they used to have a railroad on it, so, you know, they did their own, they did themselves in, as far as I'm concerned.
I think he said this was a courtesy mostly, and it's a beautiful thing for the town, for the county.
Right.
Well, I think the night crossing of Twenty-Eight didn't that come off with that meeting?
It did.
Did it? Yeah.
I don't remember what was said.
But I mean, is it, um, what about home rule for us? How much do we have to say about it? Not much?
That's the question, yeah. I mean, yeah.
Well, we still have the majority plus one, we're.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely.
It's a, it's a, it's just such a unique activity, like, it's not, there's just nothing specific about it in the code book.
Right. Oh, also, what about that wellness R X recommendations from the county?
Um, we, when we addressed all that stuff, it was, um, it was lighting, it was, um.
Yeah, but they made recommendations, like, they should put electric, uh, charging stations.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's, that's, that's not like.
That business.
That was something very interesting.
Yeah.
How do you put electric charging stations in the flood plant?
Right.
It's a very good question.
Like electrify the whole town when the flood's on.
A lot of, a lot of that stuff was, I mean, it was.
I mean, it's a nice dream, but.
I don't know. They, and it was like, it said, what it said was, the planning board should sugge- it was like, required modification.
Required modification.
Should, should suggest.
Yeah.
It was always like a required suggestion.
Yeah, it wasn't just that. They wanted, uh, what else did they want?
The lighting, which we addressed.
An impervious surface?
No, they did, no, they wanted to make sure it wasn't impervious.
That's what I'm saying.
But, let me tell you.
It's not, it's not.
That, the whole, the whole town of Phoenisha can be impervious because they are highway commercial. There's nothing that they could say about that.
Yeah. Well, there's a lot of new laws that were in that that I never even heard of before. I think there was two other things.
There were two other things.
There's a lot of energy code to, to charge.
What's, what's the name of that law?
Oh, they should.
Oh, the energy solar passive heating or geothermal.
Yeah, there's a lot of something about energy code, which is Donna, which frankly is Donna's responsibility.
Is it called Flex? What's the name of it?
It was Flex something.
Flex something, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not even familiar with that.
I can probably find the letter.
Most, most of that stuff was out of our jurisdiction. Yeah, they wanted us to recommend they use geothermal, that's not us.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, first of all.
That's building.
The man is renting or leasing that building. He doesn't own it.
Yeah.
You know, and is the owner gonna put in geothermal or passive solar? No. That's not what I think.
Probably not.
I don't think you could put geothermal in a flood zone either, can you?
No.
Probably not, no.
Not supposed to.
Not supposed to, no.
But then again, I'm not even familiar with this new thing that they're talking about, the new energy code.
The energy code, yeah.
Yeah, well, what they are is they're trying to make everything green as much as they can.
Well, I mean, a lot of this charging station stuff, it's gonna start, um, triggering like grid upgrades because they can't, I mean, the infrastructure can't handle.
You know, you know what the electric.
Like, the transformers aren't sized for this load. The lines aren't sized in a lot of cases.
That's for sure. Yeah.
Now, one person puts a charging station in, that's one thing, but a whole town does it, that's all.
I mean, the Emerson has charging stations, I mean, how many do you need? Why would you need what information?
You have a charging station in your house, now you have to put a four-hundred amp service.
Yeah, four hundred amp.
Really?
Yep.
I think that would just end up.
You have to have four hundred amp service in your house to charge a car.
'Cause it's a, it's a separate fifty-amp breaker for a charger.
So there's several thousand dollars before you even get the charging station.
So, no, if you got an electric car, you can't just plug it into your.
You can, it just takes a lot longer.
Yeah, it takes like.
Yeah, it's like eight hours instead of two or something. Don't quote me on the exact numbers.
Yeah.
Well, that makes sense.
But no, but, I mean, these are the kind of modifications they're asking for, that is.
Yeah, and this stuff's all coming in due time, but that's not our place. We're not energy code, we're not building code.
Right. That's right, no, no.
I don't know, we do what they're talking about.
Was there somebody else coming?
There was, there's, um, there's a gentleman who wants to take existing commercial space in a, in a hamlet commercial zone, and it's being, it's recently, it's supposedly been used as office space. He would like to open a store in which he could sell sheds, and I believe he would like to display said sheds on the property. It's on Route Twenty-Eight.
Who's this?
It's on Declan Fien's property. It's not Declan that's gonna be doing it, I believe he's gonna be renting it.
It was the feed store. By Woodland.
Oh, the one that's on Twenty-Eight?
Who's that?
By Woodland, Dallas, footsaw.
Yeah, that used to be a pizza place.
And he's got the Pepsi machines there?
Everybody's remembering this pizza place. I don't remember, I remember the feed store, that's it.
Okay.
Pizza place.
Oh, that building?
You're too, you're too little. I get too young, I'm too little.
Sorry. I even, yeah.
Yeah, I sound like the pizza place.
Too young, too young.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I would, the Dinkdale, it was a pizza place, I would remember that.
But is that, the question became, does this board want the site plan review for the, to convert the use?
So he wants to sell sheds there?
From office space to a, I can't find anything in the code more accurate than retail space.
Oh.
Yeah.
But I know he wants to display them outside.
Oh, there's road there. There's certainly road there.
So does this board want to go, the intention here was that this was supposed to be like, basically like a sketch plan conference, and the board would inform them whether or not they needed to go through the site plan review process.
They would.
Yes, change the use.
Yeah, which was my impression as well.
Because it's been closed for so long back then anyway, to begin with.
And that was my impression as well, but I spoke with Declan today, and he said that in the past, at some point in the past five years, it has been rented and used as office space. So that five, Declan said.
And we need, and we need to see like where the sheds are gonna go.
That was my thought as well.
Cause we're gonna, I mean, we're gonna, I mean, neighbors are gonna call in.
The only thing I ever saw around there was the Festival of the Boys' Battle, the last five.
And I wonder if the county.
Yeah, which he should be getting a permit for.
I wonder if the county's gonna require a screening.
And if they, and that's the other thing, if they do require screening, technically that's two front yards, nothing over four feet. And is it a corner lot? Nothing over three. It's, that's stuff that has to be thought about, and I believe site plan review is probably the best way to go.
But that, that property goes all the way to the end there. That goes over.
Practically to the corner, yes.
To the corner, yeah.
Yes, and then the right-of-way gets, cuts the walk. Yes, it does go right to the end.
So it, it's not a small piece of property.
I mean, he's got space for it, and it's a good, and it's, I don't even think it's a, I mean, it's a fine location for it. He just needs to go through the front door.
Yes, yeah.
Confirmation. I will reach out and tell him that he could just.
You think he's gonna sell Adirondack chairs too? Sheds?
Yeah, to the rail explorers.
You're gonna put BP grapple down?
I wanna see a plan. I wanna see a plan.
They're gonna allow you to bring your own wine.
Yeah.
I'll suggest it.
Yeah, I mean, I think just so.
Who is, it's not Brad's Bond or anybody like that.
No, but it's a similar business model.
Similar.
Yeah.
I actually went upstairs to see if there was something for Farmer Jones when they started doing the baby barns, to see if there was some sort of a precedent that the board has set in the past.
That's been there forever.
And I guess it must have been, cause they don't have anything up there.
That might predate zoning, right?
Yeah, it's more probably.
It must, because they've got something to like build a mobile and a floodway up there and build a barn.
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause you gotta remember.
Bobby Jones was a son of the.
Zoning was once seventy, nineteen seventy-four.
Yeah. Right.
That's when they first put the zoning.
So you just, I guess I just assumed that the sheds didn't predate, but I guess they must have, 'cause there's nothing up there for them, so I didn't, I couldn't find a precedence.
Oh.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, it's not, yeah, it's not something taking place within the bounds of the store, you know?
No.
If he was switching from office space to yoga studio.
Right.
Like, but he's not, it's.
Oh, are they building something in Sweet Sue's? What are they doing over there? I saw them tearing stuff out.
Two-twos.
They're opening, oh, I heard they're opening Friday.
What, what are they?
I heard Thursday, soft open on Thursday.
Oh, really?
Are they a restaurant?
One day before.
Oh, you said they're a restaurant?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what I understand, yeah.
Ready to the fire.
They have a new interior renovations. I'm curious to see how it turns out.
Memorial Day weekend.
Yeah.
And they've been fixing up the apartments upstairs this morning.
No, they're, I guess they're ready to open it, and they're just operating it as Sweet Sue's, gonna be the exact same thing basically. Glad to have it open again.
Well, when he purchased it, he purchased the name, the building, and the recipes.
Oh.
Yeah.
So I think he intends on one side to do the restaurant, the sit-down restaurant, and I believe he intends on the other side to do more like to-go kind of things, like if you wanna shop and then grab a coffee and pastries.
Coffee shop. Yeah.
Which I think Phoenisha needs, and it's a good.
We certainly.
It'll be nice, yeah.
A grab and go.
We certainly do need it.
That's what they call it in case.
Grab and go.
Grab and go.
Grab and.
Yeah.
He's gonna sell that coffee that everybody's obsessed with, that local coffee I can never remember the name of. It's not gonna come to me.
Heavy, heavy feather?
But, maybe that's it. It's, everybody just raves about this coffee. I think I've had it once, it was very good.
Are they have it in, uh, Phoenisha Diner? Do they have that coffee in the Phoenisha Diner?
No, they sell.
Forget who that is.
But their coffee.
That's amazing coffee. That, as currently, that is my favorite coffee.[1394.31] That's amazing coffee. That, I currently, that is my favorite coffee.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not Chris's, right?
No, but it's a funny name.
It's like death something.
Because uh.
Oh, De- um, Death Wish?
Yeah, maybe that's it.
Death Wish.
Because what's his name, that owns it, he gave me a burger that coffee.
It's a very good coffee.
Right, so they grow coffee in that?
No, it's like, it's more local, not like in Shandaken local, but it's, anytime you can tout something as local, it tends to sell a little better.
Yeah. Sure.
It's like products now, it's like designed in the USA.
Yes, anything, anytime you can put US.
Alright, um, yes, no, anything else?
Anything I don't?
I'm good.
So, the Norde- Nor.
Norisdale?
Norisdale?
Norisdale, yeah.
I spoke with him today.
The gentleman who bought it?
Who purchased it, yeah. He, I think they want, he's moving towards the idea of hosting small events there.
Events?
He says events, he means weddings.
Where?
Norisdale.
They have all that property, they have the motel, the house.
Yeah.
I told him he needs to come here.
It's not a large space though.
It's not in the back either, it's, there's not a lot of space.
No. Either they have a parking issue.
No, cause they have no site plan approval for anything.
Yeah. For anything.
No, because they, the prior owners only advertise on Airbnb, and so they didn't need.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, they came here and they just told them, good luck, but they were not.
Yes. I will say, I've got a couple calls over the past couple weeks, ever since S T R started picking up, people at home, parcels with more than one home, looking into the process of doing some sort of special use permit for like a cabin development or something like that. I think they're trying to, and it's got, I know it's got to do with S T R, getting around that sort of licensing and coming straight to this board to get approval for that kind of commercial use.
Well.
So that's an interesting thing that I think might come.
The um, the law that the town board, did they pass that?
S T R, not yet.
Alright, in that law, I understand that they have a, a cap of only three hundred permits, something like that?
A hundred and fifty out of town.
Owners.
Poor property owners, there'll be a hundred and fifty licenses allowed. And I can't remember where they settled on resident owner, if there's gonna be a cap or not.
Because I know that.
We initially talked about no cap for residents.
Yeah, and that was, but I think that came back up during the workshop, you were there.
I think they're, I think they're gonna go with another cap for residents, because they didn't have to go a bu- a hundred fifty or more, otherwise it wouldn't be fair.
Yeah, they decided to keep it that way, didn't they?
Right.
Right.
But they're more non-resident S T R owners than residents, so that they couldn't figure out how to work that out.
Double. There are twice as many non-residents.
They didn't really see the need for a cap on resident owners, since it wasn't that many, yeah.
Cause it won't get there, yeah.
So the only cap I'm aware of is a hundred and fifty on non-resident S T R owners. Anybody with a mailing address outside.
I'd like to.
How are they, and how are they deciding who gets one?
It's a first come, first served.
That's right, yeah, that's what I heard.
I'd like to say something that I learned last week. The insurances are coming by every rental house in the town of Shandaken. And looking for things wrong because people are doing short term rentals. They don't have proper.
I think of the draft law that it's gonna require a landlord's insurance policy to run a.
Or something similar.
They'll be part like submitting, submitting like your comp or something for building permit.
Yeah.
But the insurance companies for the, came by.
Exactly.
Came by. I have nine houses. The insurance companies came by and said, I have a, a crack ballister that needs to be fixed. Then they went to another one, I got all these postcards and everything else, and they're going around to every house that somebody's renting, and they're making sure that it's up to standards.
Oh. Well, that's interesting.
Yeah.
So all these people that think that they're gonna.
Get away with something.
Yeah, make so much money by renting for the weekend, their insurance policy's gonna go screw around.
And I, and I was under the understanding that if you own four or five Airbnbs, you're only gonna get a permit for one of them.
Initially, that was the idea, and I believe through workshopping it out, the board came to the conclusion that basically that's nigh on impossible to enforce.
Uh-huh.
So you, we're not, I don't believe that as it sits right now, the proposed law, which will go before the board this coming month, includes a cap on the number you're allowed to have. Cause I can tell you, two different.
It just all comes out of that law.
Entities that own maybe two properties, maybe three or four, but they're all listed under different names.
Yeah.
And so then you're requiring them to list.
So if you have five.
Non-managing members.
If you have five prop, let's say for an example, you're like an LLC, you have five properties under that LLC, is that five permits or one permit? That's five licenses, okay.
Mm-hmm. That's five licenses, yeah.
And what happens to the permit when the property changes?
It's a license. It's a li- the license stays with the parcel owner, not with the parcel. So when the change of hands, the new owner, if they wanted to continue the Airbnb, would need to come in.
Well, there's this updating, I, they're gonna have to keep it current, so it would.
Yearly.
It could lapse.
Yes, yearly, and pay a fee, which I heard somebody say, I was watching the, the meeting that I missed, say to the town board, that it, they thought it was absorbent.
Yes.
They haven't got to be kidding me, with the kind of money they make. They make that in a night.
And I don't, I don't do any short term rentals. I live in, all lo- all local people.
I know you don't. Thank goodness for that.
Thank goodness for me, that I have friends that I know in town that rent. They're all good people.
Uh-huh.
Anyone that's, anyone that's had to open a business and go through all the other licensing processes will tell you that whatever they're charging is far less than.
Oh, I have to tell you.
Than what you have to do.
In work, I saw a bill.
Health department inspections.
I saw a bill from.
Water treatment.
Uh, a hotel in, in Brooklyn for the weekend. I could not believe the taxes on that thing.
Oh.
There was like six, seven lines of just tax, bed tax, uh, use tax, hotel tax. It was unbelievable.
That's crazy.
The room was like seven hundred dollars for the weekend, and the bill was like eighteen hundred dollars at the end.
Oh, wow.
I, unbelievable, it was all tax. So around here, they're getting away with it pretty good.
That's insane.
I get a real estate paper from a friend of mine each month with the houses that sold. Every month, five houses in Shandaken sold. February, there was forty three.
And the.
And what blows my mind is that they're four and five hundred thousand dollars, nine hundred thousand dollars like this, and you should see how many of them are cash.
Oh, I believe that. Not by me beginning, they knock on the door with money and brown paper there, they're, I'd like to buy your house.
Yeah.
Dog, you know, where should I go?
We've got buyers covering closing costs on selling houses in new states, so that they'll get out of.
You wanna buy my house? Where should I go with your money?
I have a friend of mine in Kingston that's an appraiser. His wife is a realtor. He got a call, this was about four or five months ago. He got a call to appraise the house. He appraised the house on Thursday, his wife listed it on Friday. They showed it Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. They had four people bidding for it.
Oh, yeah, they fight.
There was a hundred thousand dollars more.
More, and they asked.
And one of the people that were bidding on it went up to the homeowner and said, listen, I'm not circumnavigating around the realtor. She's gonna know about this, but I wanna buy your house, and I just wanna ask you, where are you going? Where are you moving? He says, my wife and I bought a house in South Carolina, and we'll be moving there in, in six weeks, right?
That's where I wanna go. Yeah.
The guy said, okay, let's stop all this nonsense. I'll buy your house for you in South Carolina, and I'll buy your house up here, and it went through.
Wow.
Very close.
He bought both houses?
Bought the house for them in South Carolina, he said, I'll buy this house up here, forget all the rest of this, let's go.
Well, I've been looking, I didn't have the numbers ready, but looking at all the recent sales, I would say three quarters of them are from him to him. He, the seller, is not registered to vote and doesn't get scarred and started.
Start, yeah.
And it's sold to somebody out of town. So these are real, and these are single family homes, but these are really business transactions.
Yes.
This is not somebody that we know. I didn't know any of these sellers. There were like twenty of them, absolute identical. Twenty people sold a house in the last three, four months to somebody out of town, and somebody from out of town selling the house to somebody else out of town. And I'm sure they were all short term rentals, selling to somebody else who's gonna keep it as a short term rental, but it's really, doesn't really matter that much, but it's a business transaction.
That's right. They're buying them as, as LLCs too, right, John? They're buying them as LLCs.
Yes.
Yeah, they're businesses, they're not.
Mm-hmm?
Yeah.
There's a few of them, but it's all people from Jersey, well, some guy from Jersey bought Norisdale.
Yeah. Yeah, the town's being sold.
And Devon, Brooklyn, and California, and one's from, I think Las Vegas, and uh.
Yeah.
I've been working the ass hasser's office for almost ten years now. I'd say that consistently throughout those ten years, anywhere between seventy five and night, eighty five percent of the sales that we process are for people that don't wanna live here full time. That's not changed, that's not new.
Yeah.
That's been the market for a long time.
Thirty sellers, and I, I recognize two with three names.
I think you'd find that we have more people who live here full time selling right now, because they moved here full time because of COVID. And now that COVID is lessening, and they're wanting to get back to their day to day, their normal lives, wherever it is they, they came here from, and they wanna get back to that, they're finding the process best in this market especially, to sell their investment and go back to.
But these are like.
Their lives as they worked prior to COVID.
They're two year locals, not ten year locals.
Yeah, 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 definitely.
And the market is so strong.
Sure.
The market is, everybody keeps on wanting, tell me about this, it's, there's gonna be a crash. I don't see that. It's, the sales aren't coming in as fast.
Well, rates are, rates are going up.
The rates.
Yeah, and the sales aren't coming in as fast, but the prices are very steady. People are still getting a lot of.
The rate's like four point seven five now.